May the God's Holy Name be glorified!
எவரேயற்றுக்களின் நிருபம் 10 மதிகாரம் 37, 38, 39 வசனங்கள் வாழ்ச்சிகிலாம்.
The Book of Epistles to Hebrews Chapter 10, Verse 37, 38 and 39.
For yet a little while and he that shall come will come and will not tarry; now the just shall live by faith. But if any man draw back, my soul shall have no pleasure in him. But we are not of them who draw back unto perdition, but of them that believe to the saving of the soul.
வருகிறவர் இனும் கொஞ்ச காலத்தில் வருவார், தாமதம் பண்ணார். விஸ்வாசத்தினாலே நீதிமான் புலைப்பான், பின்வாங்கிப் போவானானால், அவன்மேல் என் ஆத்துமா பிரியமா இராதி எங்கிறார். நாமோ கெட்டுபோக பின்வாங்குறவுலா இராமல், ஆத்துமா ஈடேர விஸ்வாசிக்கறவுலா இருக்கிறோம்.
கத்ருடியே பரிசுத்த நாமத்துக்கு மைங்குண்டாவுதா?
May the God's Holy Name be glorified!
வருகிறவர் இனும் கொஞ்ச காலத்தில் வருவார், தாமதம் பண்ணார்.
For at a little while and he that shall come will come and will not tarry.
ஏசுவின் வருகையை நோக்கி சபை போய்க்குண்டிருக்கிறார்.
Our church is progressing towards the coming of Jesus.
ஆந்தவுடை வருகைதான் நம்முடை இயலக்க.
And coming of Jesus is our target.
ஒரு கிருசவனுடைய பூரணம் என்பது ஏசுவின் வருகையில போய், அவரோட அவன் இணைவது.
The perfection of the Christian is to getting engaged or gathering and is coming.
அதுக்கு முன்பாகும் நம்முடை வாள்க்கேல பல பாதைகளிலே நாம் கொண்டு செல்லப்படுகிறோம்.
Before that, we are taken in different parts in our life.
இங்கே நாம் பார்க்கிறோம், ஒருவன் பின்வாங்கிப் போவானானால், அவன்மேல் என் ஆத்துமா பிரியமா இராத.
And here we can see, but if any man draw back, my soul shall have no pleasure in him.
இன்றைய மெஸேஜ், "பின்வாங்காதே!"
And today's message, "Don't draw back."
எந்த சூன்லையிலும் நீ பின்வாங்காதே!
At any situation, don't turn back.
இதுதான் இந்த கால வெளில தேவன் தன்னுடைய சபைக்கும், தன்னுடைய ஊழியர்களுக்கும், தன்னுடைய விஸ்வாசிகளுக்கும், தனை பின்பற்றுகிற, தன்னுடைய வழிகள்ள உற்சாகமா இருக்கிற ஒவ்வொருவருக்கும் தேவன் இந்த கால வெளில கொடுக்கக் கூடிய வார்த்தை.
And this is the word the Lord gives in the morning time to the believers, to the servants of God, and those who are believing, and those who are following him, and those who are coming after him.
ஏன் இந்த வார்த்தையை அவரு பேசுகிறார்.
Why the Lord speak this word?
பின்வாங்குதல் என்பது பொழுது கடைசி காலங்களிலே சபைக்குளில் நடக்கிற ஒரு தீவரமான வல்லமையுடன் ஒரு செய்யன்.
And drawing back, and it is the hasty work or speedy work that is taking place in the church.
எவளு வேகமாக அவிக்குறிய வாள்க்கேல வந்தார்களோ, அதேவிட வேகமாக அவர்களை வெளியே இளுக்குமிடியாக வல்லமைகள் போறாடுகிறார்.
How speedily they enter into the spiritual life and the powers are working to draw them to such a speed?
பின்வாங்குதல் என்பது பலையற்றபாட்டிலும் இருந்தது, புதியற்றபாட்டிலும் இருக்கிறாரு.
And this turning back, it is experienced found both in the Old Testament and New Testament.
ஆனால் கிருபையினாலே நம்ம அனைவிரையும் கத்தரிமற்றுமாய் பாதுகாத்து வருகிறார்.
But by the grace of God, and He is protecting and saving us till now.
ஒருவேளை நாம் சபையில இருக்கலாம், ஆவிலே நம் பின்வாங்கினவர்கள காணப்படலாம்.
We may be in the church, but we are the one may be drawn back in the spirit.
அதைக்குறித்து நாம் சரியான உத்தரம் விளைங்கிக்கொள்ளவேண்டியது அவசியம்.
It is very needed for us to understand well.
விஸ்வாசத்தினாலே நீதிமான் பிளைப்பான்.
The just shall live by faith.
அந்த விஸ்வாசத்தை உட்டு ஒருவன் பின்வாங்கிப் போவானானால், அவன்மேல் என் ஆத்துமா பிரியமா இராத.
If any man draw backs from this faith, my soul shall have no pleasure in him.
அப்படியோ ஒருவன் பிங்கு பின்வாங்கினால், அவன் கெட்டுபோவான், நாமோ கெட்டுபோக பின்வாங்கக் கூடாது என்று சொல்லியிருக்கிறார்.
And if anyone draw back unto perdition, they should not be turned back for the perdition.
இந்த பாதையினுடைய பெயர் விஸ்வாசப் பாதை.
And this path is called the path of faith.
இந்த வழி விஸ்வாசமார்க்க.
And this religion or way is faith religion.
இது ஒரு சாதாரண மனிதன் கடந்து போக முடியாது, விஸ்வாசிகள் மட்டுமே இதில் கடந்து போக முடியும்.
Ordinary person cannot travel or cannot cross this path, only a spiritual or believer can climb in this.
விஸ்வாசம் இல்லாமல் ஒருவனும் தேவனுக்குப் பிரியமா இருப்பது கூடாத காரிய.
Without which faith and no one is well able to be precious unto God.
நம்கு எல்லாருக்கும் பெயர் விஸ்வாசிகள் என்று பெயர் இருக்கிறது.
And we are all having the name as believers.
ஆனால் நம்மில் எத்தனவேறு குளை, தேவன் எதிர்பார்க்கிற விஸ்வாசம் இருக்குறதென்று நாம் சொல்ல முடியும்.
But how many of us can say, and the expected faith that Lord has having, do we have in it?
விஸ்வாசம் என்பது நம்பப்படுகிறவிலின் உருதியும் காணப்படாதவிகளின் நிச்சியமாயிருக்கிறது.
And faith is the substance of things hoped for, the evidence of things not seen.
விஸ்வாசம் பைற்சிவிக்கப்படவேண்டும்.
And faith must be exercised.
அதற்காக நாம் மூய்ச்சி எடுக்கவேண்டும்.
So we must take steps for it.
அதுக்காக நாம் கிரியை செய்யவேண்டும்.
And we must work for it.
விஸ்வாசம் வார்த்தையில் மாத்திரமல்ல.
Faith is not only by works.
அது கிரியைகளோடு கூட மூய்ச்சி செய்து பூரணப்படுகிறது என்று காண்கிறோமே.
And we are saying that to be perfected and is exercised through the works.
அந்த விஸ்வாசத்துக்காக நீங்கள் தெயிறித் தேவனை துதிக்கவேண்டும்.
And we have to praise for this faith every day.
தேவனை நீங்கள் துதித், விஸ்வாசத்தை, தேவனை மைங்கிப்படுத்தி, விஸ்வாசத்தில் முலு நிச்சியமாய் நம்பி, விஸ்வாசத்தில் நீங்கள் வல்லவர்களாய் மாறவேண்டும்.
And praising God every day, having assurance with whole faith, and we must become the heroes of faith, are strong in faith.
ஆந்தவர் அவரு ரேஷியை வைத்திருக்கிறார், அந்த ரேஷியைவுக்கு, நம்முடைய அந்த அளவுக்கு நம்முடை விஸ்வாசம் வரவேண்டும்.
And God have a ratio, and to that extent, our faith must come.
பலையற்றபாட்டு விஸ்வாசம் வேறு, புதியற்றபாட்டு விஸ்வாசம் வேறு.
The Old Testament faith is different than the New Testament faith.
பலையற்றபாட்டு விஸ்வாசம் அவர்களைக் குறித்து நாம் எவரேயற்று 11 மதிகாரம் முழுவதும் படிக்கையில.
And we are able to see about the faith of the Old Testament in Book of Hebrews Chapter 11, Holy.
ஆனால் எவரேயற்று 11 நுண்டு கடைசியில் வரும்பொழுது, அங்கே நிருபக்காரன் சொலுகிறார், "அவர்கள் நம்ம எல்லாமுள் பூரணராகவில்லை" என்று சொலுகிறார்.
But the writer of the epistle in the 11th chapter lost his his, and they were not made perfect.
அவர்கள் அக்கணியின் உக்கரத்தை அவித்தார்கள்.
And they quenched the fiery violence of fire.
அவர்கள் சிங்கங்களின் வாயை அடைத்தார்கள்.
They stopped the mouth of lions.
ராஜ்யங்களை ஜெய்தார்கள்.
And they were overcome the kingdom.
உலகம் அவர்களுக்குப் பாத்திரமா இருக்கவில்லை.
And the world was not a vessel to them.
அப்படியோ ஒரு வாள்க்கை வாள்ந்த அவர்களை விட, புதியற்றபாட்டு விஸ்வாசம் என்பது, அதேவிட ரெட்டிபான மடங்கு வரவேண்டும்.
And when compared to these Old Testament saints and these New Testament people, must come to the double fold of faith.
பலையற்றபாடு விஸ்வாசம் என்பது ஒரு சாதாரண விஸ்வாசம்.
The Old Testament faith is an ordinary faith.
ஆனால் புதியற்றபாட்டு விஸ்வாசம் என்பது மகாபரிசுதமான விஸ்வாச.
But New Testament faith is the most holy faith.
அவர்கள் விஸ்வாசத்தினாலே, விஸ்வாசத்தினாலே என்று அவர்களைக் குறித்து சொல்லியிருக்கிறார்.
And it is said about them by faith, by faith.
ஆனால் யூதா 20 சொலுகிறது, "நீங்களோ பிரியமானவுளே, உங்களை, நீங்கள் மகாபரிசுத்த, உங்களுடைய மகாபரிசுதமான விஸ்வாசத்தின்மேல் உங்களை உருதி படித்துக்கொள்ளுங்கள்" என்று யூதா சொலுகிறார்.
And Jude 20, Jude says, "But ye believe, building up yourselves by your most holy faith."
அப்போ பலையற்றபாட்டு விஸ்வாசம் வேறு, புதியற்றபாட்டு விஸ்வாசம் மகாபரிசுதமான விஸ்வாச.
Old Testament faith is different, but the New Testament faith is the most holy faith.
அப்படியானால் தேவன் நம்மிடத்தில் எதிர்பார்க்கிற அந்த விஸ்வாசத்தை நாம் காத்துக்கொள்ளவேண்டியது எவளவு கவனமாக இருக்கவேண்டும்.
So we have to stay here in the matters of keeping the faith which is given in the Old Testament period.
பவுலாக இருந்தாலும், விஸ்வாசத்தை காத்துக்கொண்டால்தான் நிதி இங்கிரீடம்.
Even if it is Paul, if he keep the faith, then he will get the crown of righteousness.
யாராக இருந்தாலும், விஸ்வாசத்தை காத்துக்கொண்டிருக்கறவர்களுக்கு பைப்பில் சொலுகிறது, அவ்வடை பிரச்சனமாகவுளிவிரும்புற யாவருக்குமதைத் தருவார்.
And they keep the faith, and those who are learning for the appearing, he will give to everyone.
ஒருவேளை உங்குடைய விஸ்வாசம் கடந்த காலங்களிலே தடுமாறியிருக்கலாம்.
Sometimes your faith may stumble in the past days.
ஆனால் பைப்பில் சொலுகிறது, "விஸ்வாசத்தினால் நீதிமான் பிளைப்பான்."
But the Bible sees, that just shall live by faith.
பின்வாங்கிப் போவானானால், அவன்மேல் என் ஆத்துமா பிரியமா இராத.
If any man draw back, my soul shall have no pleasure in him.
விஸ்வாசத்தை விட்டு ஒருதன் பின்வாங்கிட்டானா, அதனாலதான் நம்ம பின்மாற்ற காரணின்னு அவனுக்குப் பேர் கொடுக்கிறோம்.
If any drawbacks out of this faith and he is called as a backslider.
விஸ்வாசத்தைக் குறித்து நீங்கள் ஆயிர மெஸேஜ் கேட்டிருக்கலாம்.
And you have heard many messages about faith.
அது முக்கியமல்ல.
That is not important.
ஆனால் நமக்குள்ள எவளு விஸ்வாச கட்டியலிப்பிருக்கிறம், நாம் அதை சிந்திக்கவேண்டும்.
And what sort of faith that we have built it up, we must consider.
ஏனெனால் நமக்கு கொடுக்கப்பட்ட விஸ்வாசம், ஒருவிஷையும் ஒப்புவிக்கப்பட்ட விஸ்வாச.
Because the faith which is delivered to us is once, it is given or delivered to us.
வேதம் என்ன சொலுகிறது?
About the Scripture.
யூதா 3 வசனம் என்ன சொலுகிறது?
And what the Jude 3 verse.
"நான் பொதுவான ரசிப்பைக் குறித்து உங்களுக்கெழுதே, நான் கவனமாய்கிருந்தேன்."
And I was so careful about writing a corner epistle.
ஆனால் இப்பொழுது பரிசுத்தவாங்களுக்கு ஒருவிஷையும் ஒப்புவிக்கப்பட்ட விஸ்வாசத்துக்காக, நீங்கள் தைரியமாய் போறாடவேண்டும்னு எழுதி உணர்த்துவது எனக்கு அவசியமாய் கண்டது என்று அவர் பேசுகிறார்.
And it says, "I give all diligence right unto you to exhort you that ye should earnestly contest for the way faith which was once delivered for the sins of God."
உன்னுடைய விஸ்வாசத்தைக் கண்டு கத்தர் ஆச்சிரியப்படம்.
And looking at your faith, God must amaze.
ஏசு இந்த உலகத்தில் இருக்கும்பொழுது ஒருசலருடைய விஸ்வாசத்தைப் பட்டு ஆச்சிரியப்பட்டார்.
When Jesus lived on this earth and looking into some of the faith, he was amazed.
ஏசு ரெயிலிலும் நான் இப்படிப்பட்ட விஸ்வாசத்தைக் காணவில்லை என்று சொல்ல.
I have seen that belief among Israel.
ஆனால் அதே ஏசு ஒருசலரைப் பாத்து, "உங்கள் விஸ்வாசம் எங்கே என்று கேள்வி கெட்டார்?"
But seeing Jesus looking at others, asked, "Where is your faith?"
அப்போ பாராட்டவேண்டிய இரத்தில் அவர் பாராட்டுகிறார், கடிந்துகொள்ளவேண்டிய இரத்தில் கடிந்துகொளுகிறார்.
Where he want to appreciate, he appreciated, and where he want to reproach them, he reproached.
ஏசு உயிர்த்துள்ளுவிட்டார்.
And Jesus was resurrected.
இப்பொழுது சீசரிலோடு எடைபடுகிறார்.
And he was dealing with his disciples.
மார்க் 16 கடைசியில் பார்க்கும்பொழுது, அவருடைய அவிஸ்வாசத்தைக் குறித்து அவர்லைக் கடிந்துகொண்டார் என்று வேதம் சொட்டிக்காட்டுகிறார்.
And the Bible clearly depicts that, and looking unto their unbelief, he reproached them.
அவர்க்கு உயிர்த்துள்ளந்த பின்புகுடை, இவளுடைய அவிஸ்வாசத்தைக்கண்டு அவருக்கு வெறுந்த வேதனை உண்டானது.
And after resurrection, looking unto their unbelief, and he got grieved.
அவர் ரெண்டு காரியத்தைக் குறித்து கடிந்துகொண்டதாக, மார்க் 16, 14 கிருசுட்டிக்காட்டுகிறார்.
And 16:14 says, "And he was greed in two matters."
ஒன்று அவருடைய அவிஸ்வாசம், மற்றொன்று அவருடைய இருதைய கடினம்.
One is their unbelief, and another is hardness of heart.
இந்தக்கு ஏன் பின்வாங்கக் கூடாது என்பதை நாம் விளைங்கிக்கொள்ளவேண்டும்.
Why we have to understand that we should not draw back?
நம்ம பாவத்திலும் வெளியே வந்திட்டோம்.
We came out of sin.
சபைக்குள்ள வந்திட்டோம்.
We come to the church.
ஒரு அடைக்கலப் பட்டனத்துக்குள்ள வந்திட்டோம்.
And we are in the stronghold of God.
தேவனுடைய கட்டுபாட்டுக்குள்ள வந்திட்டோம்.
We are under the control of God.
ஆனால் இந்த வாள்க்கையை நம்ம சரியா செய்யாட்ட, இதுக்கு பனிஷ்மெண்ட் வந்திரும்.
If we do not do this life properly, we will get the punishment.
நான் சொல்லுகிறது நீங்கள் விளைங்கிக்கொள்ளாங்க.
And understand what I say.
நீங்க வெளியே இருந்து நாம் பாவன் செய்த காலங்கள் ஒரு கால.
And those are the times that you were outside and committed sin.
அதுக்கு நாம் அப்படியோ போயிருந்தா, அதுக்கு ஒரு பனிஷ்மெண்ட் வாங்கியிருப்போம்.
And if we go in such a way, and we will receive the punishment.
ஆனால் அறியாமும் இருள் காலங்களை தேவன் காணாதவர் போல் இருந்தார்.
But in one season, and he was like a monster.
தன்னுடைய ரத்தத்தினால் நம்மை கலவி, நம்மை சமீபமாக கொண்டுவந்துவிட்டார்.
By his blood, he cleansed us and brought us to his church.
ஆனால் இப்ப இங்கே வந்த பிறகு, இங்கே உள்ள பிரமாணத்தை நீ கிள்ப்படிலேனா, அதுக்கு பனிஷ்மெண்ட் வாங்கக்கூடாது.
After coming to the church, and if you not obey to the laws, you have to attend the punishment for it.
வெளியே தப்பு செஞ்சி சாப்பா வாங்குறது வேற இதுக்குள்ள வந்துட்டு நீ தப்புப் பண்ணி சாப்பா வாங்கக்கூடாது.
Committing sin outside and getting the curses different than committing a god sin after coming to the church.
ஒரு பெரிய மீட்டிங்கள் பாஸ்டர் டியூ அவர்கள் பேசும்பொழுது.
In a big meeting when Pastor T U Thomas.
அவருக்கப்பற்றது முடியவில்லை.
And he was not evil.
அந்த மீட்டிங் அவர் வந்தாரு.
And he came to the meeting.
கார்லதான் கொண்டு வந்தாங்க.
And they took him in the car.
வந்து சேர்ல போய் உக்காரலா, அப்படி நேர ஸ்டேஜில் கொண்டார்.
He sat on the chair and came directly towards the.
அதெல்லாம் அவருடைய கடைசி கால கூட்டங்கள்.
And that is the last days of the meeting.
ஏனால் அவருக்குப் பேச நிக்க முடியாது, அவளவு கண்டிஷன்ல வந்தார்.
Because he cannot stand in that condition.
வந்த உண்மை நேன் கையையடுத்து கும்புட்டு சொன்ன வார்த்தை.
And when he came and saluted to the people, let's say the word.
யாரு இந்த மார்கத்தில் இருந்துட்டு நரகத்துக்குப் போய்டான்.
And staying in this way, don't get to help.
இதில் இருந்துட்டு நீ எங்க பெடாதா? நரகத்துக்குப் போய்டா.
And being in this fellowship, don't go to him.
உண்மைபிரியமானவுளே.
That is true.
நாம் இதில வந்துட்டு பின்வாங்கிட்டோம்னா, உலகத்து மனிஷனுக்குக்கு நேர்ந்ததைக் காட்டுறோம், நமக்குதான் அதிக கேட்டு நடக்கும்.
After coming to this way, and if we draw back, and the thing which is coming to happen to the worldly people is more than to us.
சோதோமுக்கு நடந்தது, கோமராவுக்கு நடந்தது நமக்கு எல்லாருக்கும் தெரியும்.
We all know what happened to Zodome and Kamara.
ஆனால் ஏசு கிருச அதைக்குறித்து புதியற்றபாட்டில் பேசும்பொழுது.
But when Jesus Christ spoke about the New Testament.
கப்பர்நூகமே உனக் கையோ.
And woo and took heaven.
திருசிதோனே உனக் கையோ.
And for Tyre to oath to you.
பெற்சாய்தாவே உனக் கையோ.
And oath to the Messiah.
உண்ணில் செய்யப்பட்ட பலத்த கிரியைகள் சோதோமில் நடந்திருந்தால், அவர்கள் மனந்திரிப் பெறுப்பார்கள்.
And all the works that happened in New, it happened there to the Sodom, and they would have repented.
ஆனால் அப்படினால் இனிமேல் வருகிற நியாய் திருப்பில, சோதோமைக் காட்டிலா அதிக நியாய் திருப்போன கூடுந்து சொல்லார்.
So the judgment to you will be more than to Sodom.
ஏனெனால் நம்மடை கைகளில் அதிக ஒப்புக்கொடுக்கப்பட்டிருக்கிறார்.
Because many things were delivered in our hands.
அதிகம் கொடுத்த உண்மையிலத்திற்காக அதிகம் கேட்கப்படும்.
And that which was given more will be asked more.
அவன் அதை ஒப்புக்கொடுக்கவிட்டால், அவனுக்கு அதிக அடிகள் உண்டு என்று லோகாவிலே ஏசு பேசுகிறார்.
And in Luke of Luke, and Jesus prayed that, and he was not delivered, there is a more punishment for him.
நம்ம கைல ஒரு விஸ்வாச ஜீவியைத் தேவன் கொடுத்திருக்கிறார்.
And the Lord have given life of faith in our hands.
அதை நம்ம சரியான உத்தரத்தில் எல்லாவற்றால், நமக்கு அதுலக்குதான் தேவன் கணக்கக்கூடும்.
If we are not proper in this, and Lord will recognize in that matter.
அப்போ நாம் அதுக்கு சரியா கொடுக்கலேனா, நாம் இந்த சபையில வந்து நியாய் திருப்புக்கேதுவாக போய்விடுவோம்.
If we are not giving proper in the church, and we will turn towards judgment.
அதனாலதான் சொல்லியிருக்கு, "பின்வாங்கிப் போவானானால், அவன்மேல் என் ஆத்துமா பிரியமா இராத."
And so it is said that if we draw backs, and my soul will not have pleasure in him.
பின்வாங்கிப் போனதுக்கு நீ உங்கள் புருஷன் காரண சொலலாம்.
And you may tell reason for your backsliding or drawing back.
உங்கள் மனிஷிய காரண சொலலாம்.
And you may point out your wife.
நீ பெற்ற பிள்ளைகளைக் காரண சொலலாம்.
You may reason your children.
உன்னைப் பெற்ற பெற்றோருலே நீ காரண சொலலாம்.
Or you may reason about the parents that you beget them.
ஏதாவது ஒரு ஊழிய காரணை நீ காரண சொலலாம்.
Or you may tell about the servants of God.
ஏதாவது ஒரு சம்பவத்தை நீ காரண சொலலாம்.
Or you can give reasons about some incidents.
இலவிடலா ஆதம் சொன்னது போல பீசா, ஏவாளை சொலலாம், ஏவாள் சொன்னது போல சர்ப்பதை நீ சொலலாம்.
And like Adam, Adam said to Eve, and Eve to serpent.
இப்படி யாரேயாவது ஒராளை நீ பின்வாங்கிப் போனதுக்கு காரண சொலலாம், அது நியாயமாக இருக்கலாம்.
And you may point some person as a reason for your backsliding or drawing back.
ஆனால் நீ பின்வாங்கும்போது தேவன் உன்மேல் பிரியமா இருக்கமாடு.
But when you draw back, the Lord will not have pleased in you.
ஏனெனால் உனக்கு கிருபை கொடுத்திருக்கிறார்.
Because he gave you grace.
அவிஷயம் கொடுத்திருக்கிறார்.
He gave you anointing.
பைப்பில் கைல கொடுத்திருக்கிறார்.
He gave you Bible in your hands.
ஆலமான உபரேசங்கள் கொடுத்திருக்கிறார்.
He gave you deep doctrines.
And one group of people when the temptation comes they go away from faith.
Sothenai paavatthala dhavaru nannikke kudathu innaki elidi vichike sothenai aasirvadathilumbaram.
And don't think that since temptation comes only through sin it also comes through blessings.
Elidi vichike elidi vichike adavudhu sothenai paavatthi nimitham pisasunimitham dhavaru nannikke adhe sothenai aasirvadathilumbaram.
And right down only this temptation comes not only through sins or by demons also it comes through blessings.
Ah, o palayir pa- mundeya kalangalna soluvanga devan kodukkama sodhikirarne anai ipa CPM diya varthe devan koduthu sodhikira.
In the earlier days in CPM they used to see and the Lord given out not and test them but in these days Lord give it them and test them.
Anika ulidhikka onda saapadu kadeyada.
In those days when they come to the ministry no fur and no proper garments.
Yatneya nal pasi patinile kadandaga.
And many days starved and half ways hunger.
Ipa andha schemee kadeyada.
But nowadays there is no scheme like this.
Ipa ellame already ipa mune maasidhukka saapaduke ellava sadhigalo already ellame store fulla arukka pantakasale narambi irukka.
Now the store house is fulfilled before three months and whatever is needed is fulfilled there.
Anika adhila unmeyarukano innaki idhila unmeyarukano.
In those times they should be faithful in that but in these times they should be faithful.
Onaka devan aasirvadathiyi vasadiyil vaipugaliyin alla velaiyin alla postiyyin koduthu appriye oni kondurum boludhu ni adhila guda adhiliye gavana thuvichhi ni pinallu peedva adhul da onakkun sothena.
When the Lord gives you blessings and facilities and good position and post and you must be proper faithful in it and then the temptation comes and you must be no more in it.
Manushanukku undahum pugalchiye avanukke sothenai Bible vasana theli vaacholi irukka.
And there is a word the Bible says that the fame that comes to man is a temptation to him.
Ni adhiliye nambikittu poobombothu viswastavuttruva.
And you may be going out reaching to the top and when you are going there and you may lose your faith.
Pisasuram ba kanninga nevaralae.
And certainness of cunning.
Ni jabathla dhavamba teevaram arukana adhila vichhi oni kauttadu kattai panuva.
And if you are speed in your prayer and he will turn over you through your prayers.
Ni aapudangalile ni gavana sathrathreena adavichhi oni kauttadu kattai panuva.
If you pay attention towards miracles and he will revert you in it.
Ni fasting 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 porana adhiliye oni kauttadu kattai panuva.
And if you take fasting mode and he will take steps to revert you in fasting.
Ni pannadukku pinallaya porana adavichhi oni kauttadu kattai panuva.
If you go after money and he will revert you through money.
Naapadhal fasting.
Forty days fasting.
Esu ka adhiliye oru sothena vichcha.
And Jesus got temptation in it.
Ni yada virumburayo ni yada spiritual nannikariyo adhiliye onakkun oru kaniyividi vaiipaa.
And what you desire and what you think of it and there he keeps it down.
Edhutikke daru ubas edhutikke daru konja nalda chethupiduva ni.
And take fasting and your faith and your courage you may die.
Oni fasta kondubai vaachira.
And fastly he will revert you.
Idha unme priyamana.
And that is the fact.
Ah, ubas edu 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 eduma eva varu ubas edupa oru aar maasam kalichu okarambiyada eduma bhyada narakumbiyada apdi vandruva tirupi unakkun koral punnayidu onnumeelama final peedva. Avan papa right okay innora naapadu varsha irupan nandacha quicka kali bandanu morichuva.
And taking fasting for six months six months.
Ni paralavum bova yaima pannadhukku poomata.
You will go to heaven but you will not go to the place that you aimed.
Adhalada ongalai yendharu rootla unakkun adikinun teriyam.
And you know to which root you be.
Onudai belavinay edhu onudai belan edhu idhuta ampaathikke daruva.
And he will look unto your weakness and strength.
Onudai belavinathile oni takka unakkun mudiyoo onudai belathile oni takkaruka oni try panuva.
Is able to attack you in weakness he will try to attack you in your strength.
Itto abdino vendita thaavitha beatpanavai mudiyadu Bible la oru adathala guda thaavitha thottada Bible la kadeyadu.
And battle and no pleas and David is defeated and Bible no persuasion we can see he was not defeated with her.
Maamishom pengal abdina easya thatti thupeduva.
But if there is a carnal flesh of the woman and he will be easily beaten.
Alaga orunal yuddathukku pooradama vichhi avanndi lifee karappadithi uttupeda.
And one day he was not able to go to the battle and he corrupted his whole life.
Na edukke idhacholra.
Why I say this?
Onudaiya walkheela sothenai varu.
And temptations comes in your life.
Sothenai sagikkara manushan bakkyavaa.
And blizzard is the one who into the temptation.
And sothenaila unmeyarundha na manenisevan jeevagridathai peruvaa.
If he is faithful the temptation he will receive the crown of.
Orisallari yelambi devi isukathra na marnde edhathala marnde edhathala marnde edhathala marnde edhathudhalankarudu oru saachi allah.
And some says standing at divine healing I do not know is not taking medicine and that is professor man.
Adha veliyasolavanti avasiyamla adhu viswastatin viswastatin ragasyam.
There is no need to tell it outside and that is the secret of your faith.
Ragasyathin ni eniseeno sutta manasaachila kakano adhayathu micke padichikke naan vande paten jujvarsha mahak marnde edhakavale adhutnal asbithiripidienna ennapannuvaan ni solle.
With few conscience you have to keep the secret of your faith you don't want to take your mic and confess it.
Pisasukki niye edang kodukara.
And you are giving room for differently.
Adha solavanti avasiyamla oru viswasi marnde edhakamata adha avanndi concept avada.
There is no need to tell it out believer will not take medicine that is his concept.
Adha avan avanndi concept.
And that is his own concept.
Orisallari phone mani kagiranga dange engene nindasvathiri ponunde nae nae eh eh refer pandrakukka naa oru doctora enna nannikirinenni ennak puriyala.
And some calls and ask me to go to which hospital am I a doctor to refer you.
Adavudhu janangal vande sabayinudaiya andha alamana veeravu enna kandupidiyala.
And the church did not identify the truth or the root of the church.
Sothenai yendharu rithilai varu.
And temptation may come in any power form.
Ya onthaai mulamavara.
Or it comes through her mother.
Onthaappun mulamavara.
It may come through your.
Onsaabai ulian mulamavara.
Or to the servant of God in church.
Yendharu rithila vendhalu ni yedirkolla readya arukano.
It may come in any form but you will be able to resist it.
Aavikuria walkheela pinvongkarudu enbadu namakkui irukkave kudada.
And in spiritual life and there should not be concept of drawing back.
Karana enna?
And what is the reason?
Avakal veer kolavilla.
And they were not present.
Veer kolada budinaale avakal sothenaila pinvongkararakal.
And they were not rooted up so in the time of temptation they fall leaving.
Ebraer naangga madhikara modala vasana thay parkumbadhu.
When we look at the book of Hebrews chapter four verse one.
Ebraer naanggu once. Aanupadinaale avde ilai paaradil pravesikathark eduvaran vaakathatham namakkunda irukam ungalil varvannu adayamal pinvangi ponnavanaka kaanapadaada padikke bayindirka kadavum. Avrude ilai paaradil pravesikke edukke eduvaran vaakathatham namakkunda irukarade.
A promise being left of us entering into his rest.
Ilai paaradil pravesikke kudiya oru vaipu adavudhu oru hall ticketo ellavita oru ulapodukka oru passo onakkun karchirukka.
There is a chance a hall ticket a pass to enter into rest.
Paralavutti nilai paaradilukka poorukke onakkun ennerke oru pass kodukappadukara.
A pass is given to you to enter to rest of heaven.
Aana adha adayamal ni pinvangi ponnavanai irukka kudada.
But you should not seem to come short of it.
Onakkun karcha vaipu ni bayan paduthanu.
You must make use of the opportunity.
Indha olakathala namakilai paaradil kadeyadu.
We don't have rest in this world.
Ilai paarunkkaalam ini varukarada irukarande vedam solukaradu.
The scripture say the rest is to attend come.
Yendharu soonalini namilai paaradilai vittuvadave kudada.
At any situation we should not leave this rest.
Padinohara vasana thay parkumbadhu.
When we look into eleventh words.
Oruvaanakilinku kilpadiyamayinalae vilindu poogada padikke.
And none being a get of this.
Nam in the ilai paaradil pravesikke jaakkaradayaa irukka kadavum.
And let us all take heed to enter into the rest.
Indha olakathala namakkun karcha ilai paaradil veeru nam ini adayapogare ilai paaradil adhu nitthiya ilai paaradil.
And the rest that we have got is different but the rest we are going to attain is different.
Andha ilai paaradil pravesikkarakadana vaakathatham namakaila irukke.
And to enter into their rest the promise is now in our hands.
Andha vaakathatham namakaila irukke aanal adha adayamal nam pinvangi pohuk kudada.
The promise is now it is in our hands and without getting it we should not come short of it.
Yappodu nam bayathoodu bhaktioodu kaanapada.
And we should be always with fear and godliness.
Indha ilai paaradil pravesikpungaradu yallarko orai time la kadeyadu.
And this taking a granted rest is not the same time for anyone.
Nandavarkal tangal padukkailile nisirarakal ilai paarukarakal.
And they that are perfect and they are resting in there they.
Yappo namakku pravarnu namakkutereyavereyadu.
And we do know when he calls us.
Avkoodambothu naa varamata niyavaramatala yarame nisimdeyadu solave mudiyadu.
When he calls you we cannot tell I have not come.
Chitirni ipa kootalarkumbothu ongalakkuptarana niyakkuptarana poitavano.
Suddenly in the meeting if he calls you you must go.
Na vidhukpo varamatingan soldeyala.
Are you telling will you not allow me to go home?
Kukthalum poitavano.
And if he calls any person he must go.
Adhu yendharathala maranavaru namakkutereyadu.
We don't know when the death comes.
Aana onudai maranavu onakkun ilai paaradilai poichare.
But the death must be rest and you must go to the place.
Maranavukku pinallana ayisuriyana balu polamikittukaruka oru walkheekni poicharedu varakudada.
And you should not have a lamentation life like rich man and entering to.
Onudai ilai paaradilukka oru poratam unda.
And for your rest there may be conflicts.
Bohamarukarukka oru poratam unda.
And then with the conflict that you know caught up with the coming.
Ya oni pinvongavichita ava ondha andhada thattiirava.
If you make you to turn turn back and he will take that please.
Yovalidhun suvi shesha maraamadhikaram arvatiyara vasana thay parkumbadhu.
When we look under John the Gospel chapter six verse sixty six.
Yoval arvatiyara. Adhumudal avde seseril anegar aurudani koodanadavamal pinvangi ponnargal. Avrude sesergalu oru kutai pa- backslate pandraga.
And one group of his disciples they went back.
Ya.
Why?
Yoval arvatiyara.
Sixty of John.
Avrude seseril anegar ivegale kettapuludhu idhukadinamana ubadesam yaariidhiketpargal endhargal. Ubadesam kadinama arukin solithe oru koottam pinvongavakha Bible solukaradu.
And one group of people they were drawn back because the doctrines are hard.
Nam sabayinudai doctrines eh konja loose panna indha adhalan narambi valiyoo velulai naantha periyachachi pasta mariduva.
If you loosen some doctrines in our church and the hall will be overflowing.
Ni yendhanalu banne.
You can do anything.
Ni vanditupon sonapodha aduvaadukka naranjiridhurpa oru aattam patama konja style maati konja drum beatla konja maati adichapodha motte valibun enghada arpa. Engada okandhurpa.
If you change the style if you change the drum beating style and now many people will come and enter to the church.
Devine healing prachinaya illa ni yavthanai asbithile paduthukka inya vandapodun sona prachinaya kadeyadu.
And there is no problem and you can come here you can stay in hospital and many people will come here.
Eppudiyavutikka yendhanalu banne.
And you can be any garments.
Olakathala oru concept unda.
And there is a concept in the world.
Aadu enga poimanchalum prachinaya kadeyadu ana paal karakamati inya vandhrunma.
And wherever the cow goes for the half a five inch and it comes back to the sip that is enough.
Kaalila maada avututuva.
And they will loosen them account in the morning.
Avantothathalameyidhu enga poidhu yenna sudhuva enga adivangada yenna vannuva karaitte saangala karaitta paal karakambothu inya vandhruno inya vandhruno kaalila paal karantu adhuleyavaidu.
It may go to.
Adha manisala sabakal paal karakadukmottu sabayla viswasiyala vichikka appri na vachan sona inya paal narambi valiyoo aadu narambi valiyoo. Eh. Adha unme.
And that is fact.
Aana namabdina allah.
But we are not like that.
Namabdibatta karigundal seegaradu illa.
And we are not doing such matters.
Nam a school mari nathtra.
And we are conducting as a school.
Ya.
Why?
Ivakal krishthi esuukul thairnourla imarun.
And they must come perfect in Christ Jesus.
Yendha manushaneyin krishthi esuukul thairnourna niruthumbadiki avraye naangalari vithu avraye da ubadesam pandru.
And do any man to get in Christ Jesus we preach unto him and to him in perfection unto him.
Namakkudidhuda namudai kolka.
And that is our principle.
Idhukkaavee indhu ulidhukkaavee nam harpanikaro.
And for this we are delivering into our ministry.
Idhila vande namarba stikta arukaro.
And we are strict in it.
Namakandikaro.
We are proving them.
Tevapattavala tandikaro.
If needed they are punishing them.
Tevapattavala odukaro.
If needed we are dissolving them.
Ya.
Why?
Enna karano?
What is the reason?
Avunka sariyilnsona avunka kupreyajinayilla.
If there is not proper there is no use of it.
Ivangala kondubai thairnourla nirutharada namudai kayla devan koduthu oru uliyam.
And to take them a perfect and that is the ministry given in our hands.
Loka onnu yedhuvatiyala ninga pakumbadhu.
When we look into Gospel to Luke chapter one verse seventy seven.
Anga enna solirukarade.
And what is said there.
Utthamamana janathakatharka ayatha paduthanu adha dampu diyarpati sabayinudai uliyam.
And to prepare their people.
Loka onnu padinhel.
One seventeen of Luke.
Pidakaludaiyidhi teplakaludidhikum kilpadiyaru de neerimangde niyanathidhikum tirupi utthamamana janathakatharka ayatha paduthukaradu pu diyarpati uliyam.
To make the ready people for justice and that is the new testament ministry.
Apa namudai uliyame adha utthamamana janathakatharka ayatha paduthanu.
And taking the just people to our ministry and making perfect that is our ministry.
Matta sabayinudai ubadesangalukka nam sabayinudai ubadesangalukka konja toughavee irukka.
So the doctrines come back to the congregation our congregation is somewhat tough.
Matta adhatala state board arukala idhu konja ICC arukalan yoosikira.
And some congregation may be like the state board and it may be IC.
Ah, abdina unme dana international syllabus namavichikro avada.
And we have international syllabus.
Adhala plakal konja tougha dhavarko.
So it is tough for the children.
Padichveliyavarambothu thairnourla akhavaruvaralendu viswasiyikaro.
But when they come out and they become perfect I believe.
Ah, appanamay endhal levelin namanamudai plakala kondu varano.
So what level we must bring our children?
Viswasttili pinvongakudada.
And you should not draw back in your faith.
Sothenaililni pinvongakudada.
At times of temptation you should not.
Ilai paaradilni vittuvadakudada.
And you should not leave your rest.
Ubadesam kadinama arukin pinvongakudada.
And seeing the doctrines are hard you should not draw back.
Apanna esu chunnarun ningalum poradha manadharundha ningalum pogalannupanindu disiterlaipathu pesinadu.
Looking into the disciples said and if you have heart to leave you can leave.
Apanna pedhurichunna nitthiya jeevasannangal ummadhalu unda naangal yenge poovu.
It's an alert is with you where will we go said by Peter.
Indha indha pentecostal prasangata eyathukaradukke oru viswasiyikka gift venu.
To accept the pentecostal preaching a believer must have a gift.
Palak gift arukala pisasurathra gift arukala arputangal chera gift arukala adhalaa rendavudhu aana modal gift in the satyata angigirikara oru gift.
He may have any gift by chasing the devils or doing any miracles but we must have a gift to believe these doctrines.
Keerukuritha Mateyupathambodhala padinunna le esu theli vaka pesukaradu.
And Jesus clearly speaking this incident in book of Matthew chapter nineteen verse eleven.
Varamthavarkalay tavaram mattavarkal indha vasana thay ettukollamattarakal eesu solukaradu.
And Jesus said clearly and they that have gifts and cannot accept these words.
Indha devanudaiyai plakal pinvongubadhu nadakara kerdu enna.
And what is the petition took place to the children of God when they draw back?
Na modala vusunna viswastla pinvongadhiyage.
First I say don't draw back in faith.
Sothenailal pinvongadhiyage.
And don't draw back a time of superstitions.
Ubadesathal edari poiradiyage.
And don't stumble in your word doctrines.
Adha yarathala namudai jeeviyathala pengalukku nam edang kodukumbadhu pinvongavaiipugal irukaradha ka Bible solukarade.
At the same time the scripture say when you give room for women in your life and you may have chances to backslide.
Ubahama padinhel padinhelay parkumbadhu.
When we look into Deuteronomy chapter seventeen verse seventeen.
Rajavakarundha avan pengalukku edang kodukka kudada.
And if among you are king and he should not give room for women.
Anegam pengalai avan vaikkumbadhu avakal avanai pinvongavaiiparkal.
And if we have many women and they make them to the by the five.
Appri na enna arto.
What does it mean?
Belavinathukka ni edang kodukumbadhu onudai walkheela ni keele varuvaai.
If you give room for your weakness you may come or fall away from your life.
Avan irudaiyam pinvangi pohada buddy avan anegam streegalai padakka vendam.
And his heart now turn away and he should not have many vibes to himself.
Onurajakal padinunnu moonray naam parkumbadhu.
When we look into first Kings chapter thirteen verse three.
Eleven verse three.
Eleven verse three.
Anga enna solapadukaradu.
And what is said there.
Salemun anegastreegalai pinbattininaal avde irudaiyam pinvangi ponaadha ka vedam solukaradu.
And the Bible says and Solomon followed after many women and his heart was turned back.
Maamushathinbadi ningal aanayoyo pennayoyo virumbi poobombothu aattamadikha ka avunka irudaiyathila tolvigalum pinvonggalum thanagave varu.
Currently if you follow after the men and women and you will have the backsliding or turning away a balance in life.
Manaviyirukka purushanirukka innorala ni thadakudada pinvani appri poobombothu ni pinvongavaai.
Having husband and wife if you are seeking after any person and you will fall away in your life.
Onakkuvivaahama ahamal irukumbadhu oru pennayoyo aanayoyo ni thadakudada.
When you are not married don't seek after a man or woman.
Bible ne solukaradu.
What is the Bible say?
Manaviyai. Uurla vasana landri indha vasana landri. Manaviyai thadade.
And don't seek after wives.
Niya oru manaviyai thadade.
And don't look after wife for your own sake.
Niya oru purushana thadade.
And don't according to own desire don't seek after husband.
Manaviyai kandadakaravam jeevanai kandadakaran.
And some says and they that was looking at a wife and receiving the life.
Adha parisutavangal katti vaiipanka baru apanna ni kandadayanu.
And when the saints of God is arranging you you must seek after them at that time.
Niya thadanna adhukaraisala tirupi inya vandukandhita alidhukaradu.
And if you seek after yourself and you must cry and must lappen and lappen.
Ah Salemun indhu vishitlalana tavarusinja.
And Solomon committed wrong in this matter.
Avanndi valvin vilchikka adhul da karana.
And that is the reason for his falling in his life.
Brummantamanavaraalae.
And he was a tremendous.
Aana vilgai angada nadandadu.
But there happens a falling.
Negeemiya padimuna madhikaram imu yarvatiyara vasana thay parkumbadhu.
When we look into book of Nehemiah chapter thirteen verse twenty six.
Rajavagya Salemun idinala pavam sayidha nalava.
And Solomon committed sin because of this.
Avanidhola raja undaayarundadu illa.
And is there no king like Solomon?
Avan devanal snehikappadavanaayarundha.
And he was beloved of his God.
Aanal indhu streegal avanai pavanchaya panninarkal.
And but these women made him to commit sin.
Belavinathukka ni edang kodukka edang kodukka aniya maamushathinii pinthodara pinthodara onudai walkheela pinvongadhal vandukundeyarukum.
When you give room for the weaknesses and when you give room for the strange of fleshly natures and the drawing back or backsliding will follow after you.
Backslide vande oru periyapin oru vilchiyakondundro.
And backsliding will give you a make great falling.
Ennahamo mupatiyiranu padinajay parkumbadhu.
When we look into numbers thirty two verse fifteen.
Anga enna solirukaradu.
And what is said there.
Ni pinvongapinvonge ni oru edathaporukurikappadu edathapeni adayamatai.
And when you backslide and turn back and you will never go to the please desired place.
Ni alayindukundeyirupai une oni katharaaliyappanuva.
And you may seek after but the Lord will make it to destroy.
Ningal avarivittupinvonginaal innu vanandharathaleyirupirakal kaanannukul poohamatiyirakal.
If you turn away from after him and you again leave them in the wilderness.
Ningal avarivittupinvonginaal ningal aliweerhalendu vedam solukaradu.
If you turn away from him and he shall destroy say the Bible.
Devanay vittupinvongkaradha andha tanmai namakkulla varaave kudada.
And we should never have the nature of drawing up back from God.
Avakal devanukku virudamai marividho.
And this become contrary to God.
Devan perumuyilolukka devan eduthnikkarana solirukaradu.
And the Lord receives the crown says the Bible.
Irandham nala hamum yarvatiyamadhikaratle naam parkumbadhu.
When we look into second Chronicles chapter twenty three.
Anga enna solapadukaradu.
What is said there.
Padinhel vasana minna solukaradu.
And what does the seventeenth verse say?
Appadu janangal ellarum. Ille sorry yarvatiyala vasana.
Twenty three twenty seven.
Ille yarvatiyanchi yarvatiyala parunga. Yarvatiyanchi yarvatiyala.
Second Chronicles chapter twenty five verse twenty seven.
Amatsya kathari vittupinvongina kaalam mudakkundu ercinabiliyundhavarkal avanukku virudamaga kattupadu pandikonda. Ni kathari vittupinvongapinvonge palavallamikal onakkuvirodamai pudupudu viruthigalna ellumbarampiipaa.
When you are growing away from God and many enemies or adversaries will come after you.
Pinvongumbadhu niyannikra viswastavuttenam velli vandittho sabayvittu velli vandittho ubadesadu ubadesadu velli vandittho sothenal nikka mudila appri niyadukara aana pisasenamandra oni alayavatra.
When you turn away you think that you came out of the fellowship you came out of the doctrines you came out of this temptations but the devil is making you to roam around here and there.
Or devanndi plakal pinvongapinvonge avanukku virudamana palasakthikal ellumbarampikara.
A child of God when he turns away or drawbacks and many powers will resist him.
Ni katharka nikka mudhu oni pathi ellapisasum bhaiipadu.
When you stand for God or the demons will fear looking unto you.
Ni pinvongaramcha odane ellavirudamai ellamikka.
When you start to turn back and every will resist you.
Oni pathu bayindasakthikal oni pathu pariyasammano.
Then all the powers that feared you will mock at you.
Idha unme.
And that is a fact.
Simpson wallamayaa irukumbadhu avan pathu bayindanga avanukku munnale orutun varamata.
When Samson was powerful and they feared at him and no one can come before him.
But avan vilindu pona boludhu.
But when he was fallen.
Avanndi kandal parikke padadu.
When his eyes was plucked.
Avanai vedikke porulakamachi narak.
And then made him the thing to shut off.
Avanavana ah ah aranma andha periyamantapatala kondundu vudranga.
And they brought him to the palace and.
Edukunna naagadrima?
Why did they bring him?
Avan vandu vedikke kattanama.
And he must exhibit something to them.
Adhey vandha oru vandu kaalal ulavudra pottunukku pravudra.
And he fell bowing down.
Avanakoranga maatitana.
And he made them monkey.
Nalla ninga purujikinnu.
And you must understand them.
Pinvongumbadhu ongalukulla oru pinvongadhal narakadu aana innoruvilathala sathruna koralamai kodiyata arampipa.
When you backslide and turning away is happening in you and any horse is fled.
Ninga pinvongidhinniyebidiriyam.
How you can know that you were backsliding?
Pinvongkaravan vande yappadumai rambatirupiyarpa nallarke enakku idhu potho appriyabrima adha avanukku valachiyapathisindavaraadu irukkaradu potho ma.
He that turned away he says I am well I am sufficient and he never take heed in the matters of growing.
Neerimalkal padinahka padinala solirukka pinvongipogaravan than valigalil dirupi ulavan.
And fourteen sixteen of Proverbs says and he that is back turning away is satisfied in his ways.
Fourteen fourteen.
Fourteen fourteen of Proverbs.
Anga enna solirukaradu.
And what is said there.
Pinvongipogaravan than valigalil dirupi adayavara.
And he that man that is satisfied for himself is turning from his ways.
Correctna avan nannachikara.
And whatever he comments his thing that is correct.
Esaya onnu naal enna solukaradu.
And book of Isaiah chapter one verse four what is it?
Ningal yen innu pinvongipogirirakal.
And why you gone away backward?
Adhunja vasana solukaradu yen ningal adikka padavaindo.
And fifth verse say why should he be stricken away?
Ni pinvongapinvonge devanndathulanda adiuladu sathrunndathulanda onakkadu.
When you turn turn back or go backward and you get beatings from God and speciality to him.
Idha namudai viswasiyakalukki ipa chikki konda oru karaya.
And this is the point that our belief is entangled.
Ah, vietlapata parents sarikara schoola pona teachers sarikara.
And home when they go to home parents are beating when they reach to school teachers are beating.
Onakkudevanndathulanda adi pisasurathulanda adiuladu.
And some lonely you will get beatings both from God and from Satan.
Enna ni pinvongapinvonge devan oni apriyal konduvaradukaavani adikkarar shichikkarar oni tandikkarar onakkun enna devanun namakkuvirodhi aitaraan soli onakkun tensiona.
And to make you to come out from it, turning back, the Lord is punishing you, chastising you, reprimanding you, correcting you. But you are having not turned back.
What does book of Zechariah chapter one verse six say? You are going to go back, you will get punished.
And Zechariah chapter one verse six says, and when you turn back and you become a destroyer.
You are going to get punished.
And the turning back is the power taking us to judgment.
Check how you are.
What is your state? And what is our state? After coming to this way, you should not be backsliding.
You are going to do it.
And when you come here, you must stand.
When you consecrate yourself and you should never turn back in your consecration. You will die.
And turning back, that experience is not useful for us.
I will tell you.
I say, don't remove the jewels.
Don't remove the jewels.
If you remove, don't wear it.
Correct? You are going to die.
Don't remove.
If you remove, you will die.
And it is your story and his story not allowing you to go to heaven.
You will have no chance. You will die.
But the Lord is giving you no chance and standing near the door, you cannot shout.
You will have no chance.
So it is your part and God.
You will die.
But when you remove, don't wear it again.
We believe.
When it was at Patavira.
She went to Tirunindra.
And she studied at.
Tirunindra.
At next station.
Good believer. I went speedily to this railway station.
And she was standing near this flower shop. I looked at her, what she was doing.
And she got one rose.
And when train started, she kept it.
She has such a character. She will die. She bought 100 roses. And she had the practice of taking this rose every day in the morning, when it comes at evening, it dried away, she'll take it out and comes. We saw her in the street. She walked away. She left our house. She took it. Once you went, she took it.
Recently, I saw her in meeting, Patrick was studying with wearing the jewels. And if you are going back, it will completely draw you back.
You have to think carefully.
And whatever decisions or determination you take, and you must think once or twice, then you have to take.
I will go. Can I handle it? You have to think. I will sacrifice everything.
If you are determined to wear white garments, and you must think twice and thrice, and can you able to stand till last and counting all the losses, and you must take this decision.
I will not wear clothes, I will not wear clothes, I will go back, I will not leave. I will wear clothes. You have to do it correctly.
And with determination, take all these things, taking the moustache and plating beard and removing the jewels and coming in white garments.
Hitler's clothes, French clothes. I saw it. It was like a full rowdy boy. I saw it. It was like a full English.
And so different types, they used to change their style.
It was like a cinema character.
You are Pentecostal. And don't be in disguise like a cinema people, you are a Pentecostal man.
You are a Pentecostal.
Even the believer girls are like that.
You are always the same. You are a Pentecostal.
And be in the one style and wherever you go, you are a believer.
He is a saint. He is a great saint. Daniel is not a saint. He is a god.
And he that is pleased to God, and they will do the will of God at any place.
He is Daniel.
He is Daniel.
You are a Pentecostal.
Wherever you are, you must be in the same style.
You will not change.
The incorruptible seed should not change.
You will not change.
And you should not change according to the times and seasons.
If you change silently, it becomes negative. Follow the same style. You will not follow. You will be a god. You will be a god. You will be a god.
And the spirit of God may chastise you, punish you, rebuke you, and reprove you, and whatever it may, as the one was tried, you will come out.
I have been told by a man. You are a pure girl.
And when I was tried, I have come forth a pure goat.
When you do a consecration, it was pure and nail, and you must stand till last. You will not change.
Like election manifesto, you should not be changed one or two days.
You will not change.
If you take a decision, stand in it.
You will stand in the truth.
That is enough.
You will not change.
And be faithful and little, and he will make you ruler in many.
In any situation, you should not draw back. You have been told in 30 years.
And the proverb chapter thirty verse thirty says, and the line that.
You are a saint.
And you should be like a lion in this way.
You should never go.
And you should never turn for anything.
You are a saint.
Any struggles comes, and you are lion, must stand.
Christians are like saints.
And righteous may be bold as lion.
You will die.
It stands the day, it never turns back.
You will die.
Even if it was better than going to death, then never go turning away from death.
I am going to die.
And from the day when you are keeping your feet.
And that is lion. You will die.
And when it is taking the step, the Pentecostal style should know.
You are a Christian.
And like a normal person, you should not go away.
You will die.
And will any person be like.
You are a saint.
And you must stand bold.
You have been told in 39 years.
And book of Job chapter thirty nine verse twenty two says, and the horse of the war will never draw back.
You will die.
And it stands at the battlefield.
You will die.
At the time of the battle, it stand and die, but never get reversed.
You will die.
And hearing the voice of it, it will shout as the he.
You will try to die.
And it never goes to draw back, but it stands for the battle to face it.
You have such a power.
And it have a smell, it is incense.
You have such a power. 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 You have such a power.
And this is the smell of the horse, somewhere the battle voice is heard, and somewhere the voice rejoicing voice is heard.
You have been told.
And that is different, someone I don't want to enter into.
You are a saint.
And it is not an ordinary horse.
You will hear.
It hears the war.
You will die.
And when the trumpet sounds, it goes out.
You will die.
It smells of the battle.
You are a saint.
You will die. You will die.
You will die. Are you a child? No. You will die.
And what does it smell like from far away, that is at the battle, that is sound of the trumpet.
You are a horse.
And you are the racehorse.
You will die.
And it is the plan of God.
You will die.
It is a plan of God that Job will conquer.
He will not conquer.
And last who conquered?
You will conquer.
And Job conquered.
Yes, he won.
And God made with him.
You will die.
Testing you and me brought here to this church, and we will be revived over, and he brought you, they don't make him to.
You will die.
The day of Christ must be the heads to be lifted up, and you should not bow your heads down.
You will die.
And this horse will never turn back.
You will die.
And whatever the sword, whatever comes, and it is slain, it will stand, but it will never go back.
You have seen it.
When you see in the race.
Do you know the speed?
See what speed it goes.
You will die.
And without any control, and it will go near the barrier.
You have seen it. You will not control it. You will not control it. You will die.
And it does not get the control to stand in the particular round, it will circle, it will go above the round man, and it will go near the barrier.
You will die.
And when hear the voice of the battle, it get ready.
You have seen it.
And even right in the story, and after the end of the battle, when the king died, it will carry the king to the palace.
You are a saint.
And you are the battlehorse.
You will die.
And you should never turn back in the battle.
You are a saint.
You are a lion.
You will die.
And you should never turn back in any situation.
You will die.
When you turn back in this period, and how wait can stand?
You have been told.
And Psalms forty four verse nineteen, what's it say?
You have been told.
Our hearts were never turned back.
You have been told. You have been told.
Our hearts were never turned back, and our stepping is without going back.
You have been told.
And he was throwing the paths where there was.
You will die.
And we should never go turn away from the paths.
You will die.
And you should never turn away in your hearts.
You will die.
And if you have grieve about your wife in your heart, and you have.
You will die.
If you have burden about your husband, your life may shake.
You will die.
So in this way, and you should never turn back even in your hearts.
You have been told.
You may come in your white and white, and may do everything, but where is your heart?
You will die.
Your heart should never backside.
You will die.
And you are the people, child of God, standing for God.
You have been told.
When we look into second Kings chapter eighteen verse six and seven.
You have been told.
And what it is said there.
You have been told.
At the time of Hesekiah, the people never resisted.
He fled. He was scared. He stood. He was scared.
And it is said very clearly.
How was his life?
He fled. And he never resisted from God.
He was scared.
So the Lord was with him.
He stood.
And he followed the commandments of God.
He stood.
And with the swiver, he went, it was prospered.
He was scared.
And he made the people to go in that way.
He was a god.
And the Bible says, no, no king is like him.
He fled.
And he never rebelled from God.
He fled. He cried.
And when it was announced, he will die, and when he cried, the Lord added fifteen years more.
He fled.
And for his prayer, and his slain killed one like eighty five thousand people.
He fled.
And for his prayer, the Lord made the son to go back.
You are a saint.
Hesekiah is not an ordinary person.
He fled.
At any situation, he never drawn back from God.
You will die.
Till you never turn back, and everything will be prosper to you.
You will die.
Second Chronicles.
You have been told.
Thirty fourth chapter verse thirty three.
You have been told.
And it is said about a man.
He is Yosea.
And he is Josiah.
You have been told.
And you should never have the mind to depart from God.
He fled.
A king Josiah, a child of God.
He fled.
He took away all the abominations of the country.
You are a god.
When you are in this kingdom, you must serve God alone.
You have been told.
So all the days of their life, and they departed not from the Lord.
You have been told.
And the word the Lord speak to us right now.
My people, my son, my daughter, don't turn back.
You have been told. Don't have the heart to turn back.
You have been told.
And don't have the unbelief heart to turn away from God.
You have been told.
And don't turn away from faith.
You have been told.
And turn not away from faith.
You have been told.
And turn not away from your rest.
You have been told.
Don't draw back at times of temptation.
You have been told.
Giving room for the weakness, don't turn back.
You have been told.
If you turn back, you will roam around.
You have been told.
If you draw back, many powers rise against you.
You have been told.
If you draw back, and you will get beatings from God.
You are a god.
You are ordained by God.
You will die.
And you should never turn back for anything.
You have been told.
You must be bold like lion.
You have been told.
And you must stay like a horse in battle.
You have been told.
And even there should not backsliding occurs in your heart.
You are a Sakiya.
You are Hesekiah.
You are Yosea.
You are Josiah.
You have been told.
And you and people should never turn away.
You have been told.
When you turn out away, and everything will be favorable to you.
You have been told.
And what is the meaning of Josiah?
He fled.
And he was ordained by God.
You have been told.
What is the meaning of Hesekiah?
He fled.
And he was strengthened by God.
He fled. He stood.
And they that were established and they that were strengthened by God will never turn back.
I have been told.
I shot my words.
You have been told.
Our time is getting over.
You have been told.
Let us all close our eyes.
You have been told.
Today, the Lord speaking to us, my son, my daughter, never turn away.
You have been told.
And don't turn back at times of temptation.
You have been told.
And because of the faults and ministry, don't turn back.
You have been told.
I anoint you as lion.
You have been told.
I anoint you as the horse in the battle.
You have been told.
I change you as Hesekiah.
You have been told.
I change you as Josiah.
You have been told.
I will establish you.
You have been told.
I will strengthen you.
You have been told.
I stand for me.
You have been told.
I will stand for you.
You have been told.
Let us all close our eyes.
You have been told.
And those who see, Lord, I will never turn away from you, close your eyes and bend your knees.
You have been told.
Today, in the presence of God, I confess, I don't know how my life would be, but I, you know what is happening in my life.
You have been told.
Eleven o'clock, eleven minute, I see, I never turn back.
You have been told.
My times are in your hands.
You have been told.
Not only today.
You have been told.
Till the end of my race, I should never turn back.
You have been told.
In faith as well as doctrine.
You have been told.
Anointing as well as rest.
You have been told.
A temptation as well as battles.
You have been told.
And the heights are also the depths.
You have been told.
Death or peril or pestilence or depths or heights, whatever it may be.
You have been told.
And strengthen, I should never turn back from you.
You have been told.
Change me as lion.
You have been told.
Change me as a warhorse.
You have been told.
I should never draw back even in my heart.
You have been told.
The Lord is going to anoint you.
You have been told.
The Lord is going to anoint you.
You have been told.
The Lord is going to make, establish you.
You have been told.
The God is going to strengthen you.
You have been told.
And you will never turn back.
Amen. I have been told. I have been told. I have been told.
Those who accept in the times of temptations and struggles, and the time of the test of my faith, I have been drawn back.
You have been told.
And if it may be not outwardly, but I got this triumph in my heart.
You have been told.
The Lord must forgive me.
You have been told.
And today, I receive the word of God.
You have been told.
Today, I keeping my, I like for the altar.
You have been told.
I keep my sin, my children, my generation of authors. Not only me, even my generation should not back hurt.
You have been told.
They are strengthening you.
You have been told.
The Lord is going to establish you.
You have been told.
Anointing will come.
You have been told.
And you will never draw back.
Amen. I have decided to follow Jesus. I have decided to follow Jesus. I have decided to follow Jesus. No turning back, no turning back, no turning back, no turning back. Yes, when it is. Pugatunindi. Yes, when it is. Pugatunindi. Yes, when it is. Pugatunindi. Pinukina, 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 pinukina. Hallelujah. Father Joel said.
Joel used to say.
English is better than Tamil.
And Tamil is better than English.
I have decided.
I have decided to follow after Jesus, I never turn back.
You have been told.
But Tamil is not like that.
You have been told.
I persuaded to go after him, I never turn back.
Yes, when it is. Pugatunindi. Yes, when it is. Pugatunindi. Yes, when it is. Pugatunindi. Pinukina, 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 pinukina. Yes, when it is. Hallelujah. Yes, when it is. Pugatunindi. Yes, when it is. Pugatunindi. Pinukina, 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 pinukina. Yes, when it is. Pugatunindi. Yes, when it is. Pugatunindi. Yes, when it is. Pugatunindi. Pinukina, 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 pinukina. Yes, when it is. Pugatunindi. Yes, when it is. Pugatunindi. Yes, when it is. Pugatunindi. Pinukina, 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 pinukina. Hallelujah. Pinukina, 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 pinukina. Amen. How many youths are taking this decision?
Life or death?
You have been told.
And depths or heights?
You have been told.
And establish, and fulfillment?
You have been told.
Whatever it may be.
I will follow Jesus.
How many servants of God rededicate you?
How many parents submit yourself?
Lord, it is enough that I backsliding.
It is enough that I face failure.
The times that I cried, it is enough.
I want to go forward.
I will never turn back.
How many are submitting?
Don't open your eyes.
And the Lord who strengthen big Christ.
You have been told. Anointing that he never turn back is coming down.
You have been told.
To overcome the world flesh and Satan, he is anointing you.
You have been told.
Let two minutes alone, he comes.
You have been told. Amen. You have been told.
His anointing not enough.
You have been told.
The anointing that turneth not away, lies roads like line.
Have you seen the warhorse?
It stands on four feet and it waves around.
You have been told.
The anointing that turneth not away, the spirit of God was moving us.
You have been told.
Let. Rowing line, there is end line.
You have been told. You have been told. Amen. Yes, who came. Life, I am. I am. I am. I am. Yes, who came. Life, I am. Yes, who came. Life, I am. I am. I am. I am. I am. Yes, who came. Life, I am. Yes, who came. Life, I am. I am. I am. I am. I am. Yes, who came. Life, I am. Yes, who came. Life, I am. I am. I am. I am. I am. Yes, who came. Life, I am. Amen. You have been told.
The Lord knows the path he will go.
You have been told.
Why you will seek the word, not turn it back?
You have been told.
Not because you have turned away.
You have been told.
And the counsel is given to you, lest you not turn away from his ways.
God will come before you.
And he want to come before it comes.
You have been told.
I end this meeting.
You have been told.
The Lord gives you.
You have been told.
Will yourself.
You have been told.
Strengthen yourself.
You have been told.
And confirm yourself.
You have been told. You have been told. Amen. You have been told. You have been told. You have been told. You have been told. Ella, Magimia, or case, is Totor Manuam. And the. Sodanila, naangal, kattapinwankipoyuradu, padugakumdiyagavendikirukkana, kattavi. Naangal, upadeshathal, mayutuppinwankipayuradu, padugakumdiyagavendikirukkana. And the race, Alamo, no, penikatpala, anye, penkanve, laasavithan, pinwankiponan, and the very. Aduvala, naangal, kanaapadadu, engla, padugakupala, and the very. Naangal, singathapola, kattapinnayaadharala, engla, machum. The porukudari, pola, engla, pinwadi, pinnayaadharala, engla, machum, and the very. Yes, Aki, amma, utte, pinwankavell, Osi, amma, utte, pinwankavell, and the very. Naangal, mayutte, pinwankipayuradu, engla, jeevitha, kakkumdiyage. The kalevelle, engda, aviyatthama, sarira, muchuma, mudanbele, mudaparsuttathale, mudajathale, engla, kakkumdiyage. In the vidathal, kattavendu, varigale, naangal, and the very, kattavendu, kanna, kanna, padre, engla, omvaru, taidipaduthu. Naangal, oruvaran, daal, mudavari, kaiwadapadu, payudan, and the very. Pinwankiponol, laika, naapadadu, and the very. Engla, jayin, undal, and the very, kaaga, ayitapadutha, and the very. Jayin, undan, bela, serk, sikhara, varigira, and the very. Engla, jayin, billy, anbilly, aymachi, umma, sandik, engla, taidipaduthu. Ketta, vartu, over, ulangale, sakti, aviyar, and the kalevele, basic, and the vasakti, vasrathadi, jeevitha. Naangal, umma, pola, machum, sandik, taidipaduthum. And the very, maluvaadu, and the, kaape, and, vaakapani, irkirira, and the very. Maluvaadu, and the, padu, akkara, and the very, aviyatthamas, muchuma, submit, pickera. Thodandam, and the samoon, kodandu, illa, thudikarama, medhukkulu.